Good evening. I would like to bring the January 20th meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Foyle? Mr. Chivone?
Here.
Mr. McGarvey?
Here.
Mrs. De Batista?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Eckert?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here.
Mr. Burns, can we have invocation and the pledge of allegiance, please?
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District. And grant to this board and their deliberations this evening the Spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be done for the benefit of others. All this we ask in your name. Amen. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now hear the reports from our student representatives, Abby Marola and Katie Recever.
The students at the kindergarten academy had a great day listening to Mr. Mack read The Polar Express with special guests Santa and Mrs. Claus. The book fair was a tremendous success. All profits benefit the library, Earth Day events, and a special guest author's visit. Thank you for everyone's generous donations to the Toys for Tots collection. Two large containers were filled with new toys.
At Glen Odena School on December 3rd, students performed at the Winter Concert. December 5th was the annual Holiday Bazaar. Everyone enjoyed many crafts, and Santa was there to visit with the children. This day brings the Glen Odena community together before the holidays. December 23rd was the 8th grade mentor breakfast. The 8th graders, along with their special person, enjoyed breakfast together. Prospect Park Home and School hosted a book fair for grades 1 to 6 and sponsored two evening holiday dances. Both events had great turnouts. Due to the inclement weather, our annual holiday car delivery was postponed and delivered to Taylor Hospital and Prospect Park Nursing Home Residence. Lastly, thanks to the generosity of the entire Prospect Park community, nearly 20 families received gifts for the holidays.
At Norwood School on December 22nd, our elementary students in grades 1 through 5, who have displayed our core values, participated in the Positive Behavior Support Assembly. Then, on December 23rd, our middle school students participated in a holiday-style Minute to Win Assembly. Grades 1 through 5 celebrated in a classroom holiday parties.
Thank you to all the parents and volunteers who made Tonicum's December Breakfast with Santa and school-wide pancake breakfast successful. January 29th will be the Second Bucks Awards Assembly honoring 1st through 8th grade students who have been exceptionally respectful, responsible, and honest. Parents are welcome to attend the elementary assembly in the morning and the middle school one in the afternoon. February 5th is the annual bingo night. All community members are invited to this event with great prizes and giveaways.
At the high school, Interboro Theater presented its fall play, The Complete Works of William Shakespeare's A Bridge, from December 3rd to the 5th. The show was about a troupe of actors who attempted to put on all 37 Shakespeare's plays in 97 minutes. Approximately 30 students were involved in the cast and crew under direction of Ms. Noel Catino and Mr. Michael Yarabini. December 10th, we hosted the Speech and Debate Competition. December 12th, we hosted the Physics Olympics and the Snowball Dance. On December 16th, the annual blood drive collected 93 units of blood. The 23rd was the annual holiday breakfast for the entire school. Also, if you saw the video as you were walking in, we are hosting a mini-thon on March 18th. This is a smaller version of the Penn State 48-Hour Thon. The money we raise goes toward pediatric cancer research. If anyone would like to make a donation, I have the information with me. We are grateful for any donation you can make. For more information, go to the Interboro website. This concludes our report.
Thank you both so much. Number three, recognition. Ms. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. January is School Directors' Recognition Month, which honors members of local school boards for their commitment to provide quality public education for PA schoolchildren. School directors generously contribute their time and talents to the advancement and success of public education. It's a year-round commitment that oftentimes goes unrecognized. On behalf of the Interboro administration and community, I would like to thank each and every member for their dedication to the Interboro School District. Each board member in their folders tonight have received a certificate on behalf of PSBA and handwritten cards from Ms. Delulo's elementary gifted students. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Let's move on to public comments. Please state your name. Keep your comments to five minutes, please. Mr. Burns, can we have the first name, please?
Ms. Phyllis Floyd.
Phyllis Floyd, 604 Fourteenth Avenue in Prospect Park. There's a motion on the agenda, 12.1, to install a storage shed for Prospect Park School for the purpose of storing the cafeteria tables. What really concerns me is that as we go along, you'll hear about the budget, and I don't feel that this is something that, from a budgetary standpoint, we have a shortfall, and we're going to be raising the taxes probably, and this is unnecessary money being spent. And speaking of money, when various board members asked questions, very good questions, I don't feel they were given straight answers. Because first it was said that it would come out of the Food Service Fund, the money for this project, $41,000-plus dollars. And the Food Service Fund is set up for equipment that needs to be replaced in the various cafeterias. And this money can't be spent on anything else but cafeteria expenditures or needs. And I don't understand, it was stated, there's no way of knowing what will be collected or raised during the year as far as additional monies from the sale of the lunches. So you're not going to know how much money's going to be collected, and you're told that the money is coming out of the Food Service Fund. And then it was stated that money has been set aside for this. Well, I think that was a little bit of a misguided statement, because how could this have been put aside in the budget process when, in fact, this just came up? This isn't something that was talked about in September, May, June, July. It just came up. So therefore, $41,000, and this was money already set aside, which takes me into equipment. It was acknowledged that there's equipment that needs to be purchased, refrigerators or what have you. I think this board should table this motion until they find out just how much exact money, not approximate, is in this food service account, and what exactly is on the list of equipment that needs to be replaced. Because are you going to spend the money, and then all of a sudden, we need a refrigerator, we need a stove or something, and, oh, well, we don't have the money. Where are you going to get it? You're going to go back to the general fund. So when it's stated, the general fund isn't going to be utilized. Well, when you approve, spend the money, and you come up short, where does the money come from? The general fund. And another example is, which I was glad that the board decided to table, was because of the confusion of where the money, not how things are going to be done, but where's the money coming from? Is the signage? Does the signage need to be done? Absolutely. I'm an alumni, and I would like to see that look nice as people come to the building. However, it was stated January 5th, I listened to the meeting again, as well as looking at my notes from the January 5th GBO meeting, it was stated in Georgia's report that the cost will be $31,400, and that in his budget, a line item under class gifts, $38,200. Then all of a sudden, last night, all of you were there, oh, no, there's only $4,100 in class gifts. And, you know, so you get a different answer every time a different question is asked. And as Mr. Evans, who is now Chair of the Finance Committee, said-
Mrs. Floyd, your time's up. We appreciate your thoughts and opinions on these matters. And just so you know, we did table to sign-
The sign's tabled, but not the $41,000 shed that is questionable. And the sign is more needed than what this shed is.
Well, that's a matter of opinion, and we respect your opinion. But your time is up. Thank you.
Well, I wanted to-
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mrs. Floyd. If you could do me a favor, Mrs. Floyd, next time, say that first, and then this other stuff at the end. Mr. Burns, is there any other?
Just one other, Mr. Zerdy Dobie.
Okay. Mr. Zerdy Dobie.
Zerdy Dobie, 200 Pahatina Avenue, Tonicum Township. Last night, Tonicum Township held their meeting, and I brought up the issue of the airport agreement. And at the December workshop meeting, I also brought it up before you as new members of the board about the agreement, and specifically, item number 3.0C, which is listed as fixed payments of $1.864 million. And I asked you to review that as new board directors in order to address the unfair distribution of that to the Interboro School District, since it's based, you're getting equal payments to the township, to county, and the school district, and your tax rate is significantly higher than either the county or the township. So I asked that you to address that, and as new board directors, to look at that again. Because I'm going to read to you from that. It says, "The tax authorities covenant that in the event any dispute among them arises concerning the allocation of the fixed payment," which is the $1.8 million, "that they shall not involve the city in any way, whether by interpleater or otherwise." So this thing needs to be looked at again. It needs to be readdressed. Which brings me to the second issue, is number 19. You're passing a budget tonight with a 3.2% increase in the taxes. Now, what does that amount of money translate into? How much? How many hundreds of thousands, or is it over a million?
I don't have the figures right.
Well, I'm just going to make an estimated guess that it's over a million dollars, the 3.2, that you're going to pass tonight as number 19. I'm just making a guess, because in June, you just passed a budget increase, and you increased our taxes by 1.5%. That $1 million, if you revisit this issue by contacting, getting together with the county and the township, and recover that $800,000, which is what you're giving to them, this 3.2 would be reduced by that amount. That's what you need to do. And if you don't, you're not engaging in what was described in opening item number one, arrow number three, wisdom. You're lacking the wisdom. And it was mentioned in that, the benefit of others. Well, the benefit is $400,000 to Tonicum Township. And Tonicum Township is spending their money, and I'm just going to give you a few examples of some of the things that they spent the money since it was given. They're spending on a swimming pool, New York Ice Cream Company, they're giving tax assistance to the Federal Express Project, all of which are being paid by you if you do not revisit this issue. The current board directors who did this failed, and you should revisit this issue to address it. Also, at last night's meeting, Mr. Auslander, the solicitor for Tonicum Township, confirmed that there are two properties, one at the airport called Westpac, and another was the Castleway property, which is the former Westinghouse site, that they have sought court relief from their assessment. So if the solicitor during the comments for this number six would comment to confirm whether the school district is going to be sued in that, because these are significant properties, one is over $9 million, and the other one is close to $14 million of assessed value. So you have, if that's true, they want their taxes reduced. And this 19 shouldn't pass it tonight. And if you don't revisit the issue with this airport agreement, you are failing the school district, the taxpayers, and the children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dobie. Moving on to number five, can we have motion number five?
Motion number 5.1, that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors, held on December 16th, 2015, be approved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero. Can we move to motion, or I'm sorry, number six. Ms. Serene, can we have the solicitor's report?
Thank you, Mr. President. This month, my office has been working on administrator training, training of new school board members, policy review, special education consultation, and consultation on student issues.
Thank you, Ms. Serene. Moving on to motion number seven?
Motion number 7.1, that the attached treasurer's report for the month ending December 31st, 2015, be approved.
Second. The motion's been moved and seconded. Are there's any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, please.
Motion 7.2, that the fund distributions, I'm sorry, that the fund disbursements in the amount of $6,463,219,86 be approved.
You have to reread that number, Mr. Burns, it's $6 million?
$6 million, I'm sorry, $463,219,86 be approved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, please.
Motion 7.3, that the attached budget transfers for the fiscal year 2015 to 2016 be approved.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Number eight, correspondence. Mr. Burns, do we have any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Moving on to the committee reports. Mr. Evans?
Yes, good evening. On January 5th, School Board President William Phelps started the meeting by assigning me, Jack Evans, Kevin McGarvey, and himself as members of the Finance Committee. The committee then elected me, Jack Evans, as Chair. The first meeting of the new Finance Committee was brought to order at 6:11 PM. Mr. High School presented the committee with an overview of the preliminary budget, as well as a tax increase comparison ranging from 0% to 3.2%. He pointed out that we would be well advised to prepare a preliminary budget with a projected tax increase of 3.2%, rather than accepting the index ceiling of 2.4%. In the time before the final budget is presented, Mr. High School and Superintendent Riley committed to a deeper investigation into the line item budget to see what economies could be had, keeping in mind that a significant portion of the increase in the forecast is due to increased salaries resulting from our most recent contract settlements and requisite benefits. Mr. High School also provided financial statements current as of December 31st, 2015, and a 10-year history showing previous tax increases. There was discussion from other board members regarding the PA State contribution, early retirement savings opportunities, and deferral of some capital projects. The meeting was closed at 6:50. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Eckert for GBO?
GBO meeting was held immediately after the Finance Committee. At that meeting, I was not present. I was out of town for my work, but I was elected as chairperson, and there were three items that evening on the agenda. There was, of course, the Prospect Park Shed, the high school signage, and the middle school social studies textbooks. I'll give a little bit of light on the Prospect Park Shed, because there was a figure thrown out there of $41,000. That is a correct figure. 50% of that project money will be coming from the food service, the other 50% will be coming from funds designated from the Facilities Department. It is not a shed. It is a permanent structure. All right? It's not something that we're going to Home Depot and purchase for $41,000. We are going to put a permanent structure in that has electricity footers and will be up to code. Also, that price includes renovations of a wall in the existing Prospect Park School so we can have access to the shed. The purpose of the shed is to store cafeteria tables. Yes, the cafeteria tables have been left in the Prospect Park cafeteria during the day for many, many years. It's been brought to our attention at the present moment, it's an issue, safety issue, an operation issue, and also the tables are blocking a key electrical panel. That is why we are electing to go do this project at the present moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Mr. Burns, legislative update?
Everyone's aware of the budget issue, I'm sure, and the funds that have been allocated so far by Governor Wolf. He did accept the first six months of the basic education funding appropriation, and the distribution assumes a restoration of the vetoed amount for a total appropriation of $5,633,000. I'm sorry, $5 bil-, this is where the confusion comes in. In my legislative report, we deal with billions, in the school district, it's millions. What that amounts to for the fiscal year of 2015 to 2016, for right now, even though it's not the total allocation, they're going to use the numbers from 2014 to 2015. So each school district at this point has received 45% of its net allocation, and that's designated for the months of August, October, and December. There's really probably not any end in sight, nothing anyone can predict at this point when this will be fully resolved. The target budget from the Senate is obviously much greater than what the House was willing to approve, and the $350 million BEF increase is losing support in the House as we speak. So at this time, we're looking at draft resolution. There is litigation, which is headed by the William Penn School District. Their suit, I believe, is to be expected to go before the PA Supreme Court in March. And if anyone had followed the elections this past November, we know that we have three new justices serving in the Supreme Court, so it's even hard to gauge how the court will rule on that litigation. Hopefully, at the next meeting in February, I'll have a little bit more detailed analysis of where we are, and hopefully, at that point, we have a budget approved. But predictions are going to be difficult at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Mr. Evans, Delaware County Community College?
Yes, there was no meeting of the Community College Liaison Committee until tonight. Unfortunately, their meeting was scheduled for tonight as well, so I have no report. And going forward, Mr. Chivone is going to take over responsibilities as liaison to the Delaware County Community College. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Harris, Delaware County IU?
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see everybody here. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors met on January 6th, 2016. In honor of the School Directors' Recognition Month, well, I didn't say that right, School Directors' Recognition Month, the board was presented with cards, posters, and crafts made by the students of the DCIU. It was also approved the appointment of Mr. Darren Burrell for the William Penn School District to serve on the DCI board as directors. We also approved the purchase of Meals for Ridley School District, approved for the DCIU to provide professional development to Chester Upland School District, approved to accept the June 30th, 2015 audit, approved the purchase of Sun Guard e-Finance Plus software upgrades. And for more information and happenings, you can always go to DCWDCIU.org or call me directly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. At this time, Ms. Marola and Ms. Receveries can be excused if you'd like. Moving on to number 10, can we have motion number 10, please?
Whereas the following matters are presented for action by the Interboro Board of School Directors, therefore it would be number 10. Motion that the following personnel actions be approved as listed on pages 2 through 6.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, please.
Motion that the following items be approved as listed on pages 7 to the top of page 8, encompassing 11.1 through 11.8.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, please.
Motion 12.1, that the following items be approved.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, please, Mr. Burns?
Motion 13.1, that the following items be approved.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero.
Next motion is 14, Offensive Finance. Motion 14.1 through 14.2, motion that the following items be approved.
Second. Motion's been moved and, or seconded and moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Motion carries nine zero.
Motion 15, motion that the Board of School Directors approve Kelly Boyle-
Motion 15, motion that the Board of School Directors approve Kelly Boyle to attend PSBA New School Director Training on February 1, 2016, at the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, at a cost not to exceed $200 each, paid from the district funds.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Myself, I would be glad to see Ms. Boyle taking advantage of this. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, please.
Motion number 16, motion that the Board of School Directors approve the PA REAP Technology Services Agreement with NSAN Incorporated for January 1, 2016 through December 31, 2016, in the amount of $999 paid from district funds.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, please.
Number 17, motion that the Board of School Directors approve the attached preliminary Interboro School District calendar for the 2016-2017 school year.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Marge, we need a roll call on this one.
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Chivone?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, please.
Number 18, motion that the Board of School Directors approve the attached cost proposal for middle school social studies materials from Sengage Learning at a cost of $56,179.20 to be paid from Keystone to Opportunity Grant and district funds.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes.
I just want to commend Dr. Ackman and the Curriculum and Instruction Department, and Mr. Abitable for all the work that they put in to find good textbooks for the Social Studies Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chivone. Morges is also a roll call, please.
Ms. Boyle? Mr. Chivone?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, please, Mr. Burns?
Number 19, motion that the Board of School Directors adopts the attached preliminary general fund budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2017, with proposed expenditures $68,737,543, requiring an increase of 1.0859 mils over the current millage rate, which would result in a tax increase of 3.2% for a new total millage rate of 35.0221 mils.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments?
I just have one comment, and...
Yes, Mr. Burns?
I just wanted to just point out and emphasize, this is not the budget. This is just a preliminary budget for us to use these numbers to review. This is not going to be the budget, it's just for analysis that we use to determine where we're going to allocate monies, and where those funds are going to be coming from.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Morges is also a roll call, please.
Ms. Boyle? Mr. Chivone?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero. Is there any old business? Hearing none. Is there any new business? Comments from our superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. I would like to congratulate Nicole Manser, an eighth grade student at Tinnicum School, for her cover artwork that is featured on the 2016 Holcombe Behavioral Health Calendar. This is quite a contest that Holcombe runs for artwork for the entire calendar, and to be featured on the cover art is quite an honor. This calendar is distributed across the county, so I would just like to congratulate her on her beautiful artwork. On January 9, the Office of Curriculum and Instruction held a district-wide winter curriculum fest at Prospect Park School for all students and their families in grades K to 5. Our parents and students had the opportunity to learn about our programs and engage in fun, educational games and activities to use at home. We had over 125 families attend. I would like to thank the many teachers, paraprofessionals, administrators, and high school students who participated in the event. I would especially like to recognize the curriculum team who put this all together, and a special thank you to our maintenance department for helping us get everything set up and organized. It was a wonderful event. Our student artwork this evening is courtesy of Ms. Sunny Lee Maori. Ms. Maori is our traveling art teacher at Prospect Park, Norwood, and Glen Olden. And finally, tonight, the board approved a preliminary draft of the 2016-2017 calendar. This will be available on the website for parents, students, and the community, and if we need to make revisions on that, we will notify the public and update as needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. On Tuesday, February 2, 2016, the Finance Committee meeting with the GBO meeting immediately following will be held at 6:00 PM in the Boardroom of the Administration Building. The next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be conveyed in the Boardroom of the Administration Building on Tuesday, February 16, 2015, 6:30 PM. The next regular monthly public meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be conveyed in the auditorium at the high school on Wednesday, February 17, 2016, at 7:00 PM. At this time, are there any comments from the board?
I have one.
Yes, Mr. Eckert?
I would like to thank Laney D., Theo D., and Dylan S. for the cards. Their comments were very appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Anyone else?
Comment?
Yes, Mr. Evans?
I would also like to thank the young folks and teachers that were involved in the appreciation for the board members. It's good to keep them aware that stuff does go on in the community that matters to the schools and back to the community as well. So thank you to them and their teachers. I did want to make mention, it's a little unusual, but we lost a member of our community last Friday, who was a strong spirit, a good neighbor, a great mom, and the mother of one of our teachers, John McGlocklin. So keep the McGlocklin family in your prayers. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Anyone else? That being said, recently, there was a water leak at the high school. I wanted to say thank you to our maintenance and custodial crew, who worked tremendously hard in dealing with this so efficiently. The classrooms were ready to go the very next day for the kids to come back the following morning. Great job. And on behalf of the board, we would like to commend the high school students on their fundraising efforts with the Four Diamonds Mini Throns, and the effort to lend their support in helping to conquer childhood cancer. The event will take place Saturday, March 18, until Sunday, March 19. For more information, please visit the district website to support this worthy cause. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.